Yeah, he said it is. Pro Tem here.
Hi, it's, um, when is the, I'm getting some place that people can't see through YouTube. When is that going to be ready? Okay, very good. Okay, this is for 13 minutes. Who's on the line now? We have Councilmember Hamm and myself. Does anyone else on the line from council?
Jane.
We have Councilmember Jane. So there's three of us and we're, we're missing Councilmember Ward. So can we give her a few more minutes to come?
Ms. Pro Tem Ferguson, I'm on the line already.
It's all right, Councilmember Ward, that's wonderful. Oh, really excellent. So if we can go ahead and take roll call here. Um, Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Hamm. Councilmember Jane.
There.
And then I'm, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is here. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It sounds very muffled. All right, do we have anyone at City Hall that can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, this is Eric Sun. I'll have Laura Campanello, the Deputy City Clerk, lead us in the flag salute.
All right, please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, in the God of all, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you very much, Laura, for doing that. Um, tonight, we will go ahead and get started to the Special City Council meeting. Um, it sounds like we are live streaming, so thank you, Laura, for getting that up and running. Um, it's April 28th, 2020, and it is 4:32 PM. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to waive the reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Yeah, this is Chris Hamm. I'm gonna make two motions. The first one is I make a motion that we delete items four, five, and six from the agenda.
Okay, and let's go ahead and I'm going to make a, um, let's see, a vote on that. Do we have a vote now? Let's see, Councilmember Jane?
Yay.
Okay. And Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Okay, and Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, I'm a no. Okay, so that passes. We will delete item four on discussion of the potential for reopening beach parking lots and reconsideration of parking prohibitions on residential streets. We will delete number five, consideration of reopening the municipal pier. And we will delete number six, consideration of allowing passive uses on the beaches. Those were my three items that I had added to the agenda tonight. And since council is not interested in covering those, we will remove those tonight. So let's go ahead and start out with first oral communications of items that are not agendized on tonight's meeting agenda. Laura, do we have any of those?
Oral communications are not on the agenda tonight, so no, we only have comments specific to what's on the council agenda this evening.
Um, if I may, City Attorney, I believe we have to have oral communications on any general matters that aren't placed on the agenda.
That's it, regular meetings, Mayor Pro Tem, not special meetings. I would however suggest, I would suggest though that if you have comments on the items that are deleted, when we're all present, usually you would ask those members of the public if they still would like to speak. We can't do that. And so what I would suggest is that you consider, considering those comments. Uh, the council doesn't have to allocate the total three minutes per comment to those, but I would suggest that you allocate some time for the, for the clerk to read comments received on the items that you've removed.
Okay, and we could do that at the end of the meeting then, I'm assuming?
Yes, that's what I'd suggest. Like I said, usually you bump them to oral communications, but you can't do that tonight because it's a special meeting.
Absolutely. Okay, that's great. All right, well, I'm, uh, I'm supportive of allowing the three minutes, because those who have submitted their comments tonight have prepared their comments probably based on the three minutes that are given. Um, do I have a second for that?
So I'm gonna make an alternate motion, this is Chris Hamm, that we reduce the amount of comment time down to one minute in an effort to be more efficient with the time allotted this evening.
Well, let's go ahead and take a vote on that. I'm not supportive of that, but, okay, so Councilmember Ward?
Well, I'm sorry, I needed a second on that. Thank you, Kathy.
I will second that and I will vote aye.
Okay, and Councilmember Jane?
Aye.
Okay, and Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is a no to reduce the speaker time. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started on our next item, which is consideration of directing the interim city manager to plan and execute the reopening of all city parks no later than May 1st, 2020. So Laura, can we hear the public comments on that? I'm gonna follow the Rosenberg's Rules of Order and have the public comments come next.
So real quick, this is Councilmember Hamm, we didn't do a motion to waive reading full of resolution ordinances, so I'll make that motion right now.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, that's fine. That's right, because you did a substitute motion. Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay, I got the, the motion, the second for the waving.
And yes, I've, we have several comments on item number two. All right.
First, and I've set the timer for one minute, first is Pete Curran. Dear Council-
Laura, 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 Laura.
Yes, yes, yes.
Excuse me, we're, excuse me, Councilmember Hamm, we're in a formal meeting. I'd appreciate if you called me Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and not my first name, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was referring to the letter, Laura. My apologies.
Thank you.
So there's a motion, the second on the table, thank you for seconding my motion, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Thank you. And all in favor? I thought I said that off the top. Okay, any no's?
So, this is Chris Hamm, I'm in favor.
I think we're good now, Laura. I didn't hear any no's. Thank you.
Okay, so public comments for item number two. Dear Council, as a 30-year resident and retired firefighter, I support opening all city parks, trails, beaches, and the pier. Pete Curran. Next comment is from Julianne Murphy. Hello, many would like to know the council's input regarding reopening lap-only swimming. Many would like to safely return to our swim workouts at Toleda Saluda Pool, Hermosa Sports Park, and Ole Hansen where lane swimming is allowed. We would like to suggest a cautious reopening with the suggested restrictions below. Allow swimmers half the number of lanes at a time so as to have open lane between each swimmer. Toleda Saluda has six lanes. Allow three swimmers in at a time limit of one hour swim time per person. Only one swimmer per lane, no split lane swimming, no use of tables or chairs, swimmers only, no loitering. Also, we highly encourage continuing the restricted parking at our beaches and parks as greatly reduces the potential with crowds at our sites. We suggest handing out beach rules to visitors and/or making much larger supply. No one entering T Street on Saturday was reading the sign unless the park raiders made a point. Next comment is from Bill Krutinger. Reopening on a schedule determined by non-scientific staff or local elected officials is an objectively bad idea. The recent protest was attended by people from neighboring counties in flagrant disregard of the desires of the city council that the limited local reopening beach would eliminate locals and an obvious violation of the wide stay-at-home order. Fewer masks or maintained social distancing. They put everyone attending the, the farmer's market at unnecessary risk. It was also well-attended by an abundance of conspiracy theorists from Canon to anti-vaccine in addition to plenty of people simply ignorant of the legal precedent for these kinds of restrictions. I hope our city council isn't similarly afflicted. With all due respect, Councilman Gene's suggestion is uninformed and completely at odds with a developing understanding of coronavirus mitigation. The agenda says that the next meeting will be by teleconference. All right. Next comment is from Ruth Bavetta. I cannot believe you are doing this at the very height of the COVID-19 cases in our city. This flies in the face of reason and is an abdication of your responsibilities to the citizens of our city. I do not doubt that you will have the responsibility for many deaths on your hands. Next comment is from Eric Ward. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and City Council, tonight the city council is considering opening the city parks. Studies have shown that direct sunlight is an effective disinfectant against COVID-19 and kills the coronavirus on surfaces and in the air within 90 seconds. Because the parks are not thoroughly cleaned, we need to rely on disinfection by sunshine. City parks should be closed no later than 7:00 PM to minimize exposure to the virus. Keeping the parks open into the evenings may also encourage group gatherings that may not be complying with social distancing. The restrooms at the parks should remain closed as they are not cleaned often enough to be safe. Next comment is from Janice Ginevro. Dear Councilmembers, first, thank you for all your work on behalf of San Clemente, especially during these very challenging times. As you determine what will be best for San Clemente in terms of opening city parks, beach parking lots, and the municipal pier, I ask that you consider the risks that these actions may pose to the health and safety of first responders and other municipal employees, including maintenance and sanitation workers. Perhaps, perhaps it would be possible to coordinate the schedule for opening our beautiful parks and pier and parking with the county and/or other beach cities so that San Clemente is not alone in this action and is not overwhelmed by visitors from all over the region, burdening, burdening municipal employees and increasing risk to their health and safety. Thank you again for your work on behalf of our city and your careful weighing of the potential risks involved in the actions that are being considered during the Special City Council meeting on April 28th, 2020.
If I could inter, interrupt really quick. Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers, we're receiving a lot of feedback on the teleconference, so during these public comments, if everyone could mute their phones, that should reduce the feedback. Thank you.
Next comment comes from Diane Wagner. I would like to provide comments regarding the issues on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. If the parks are to be reopened, how does the city plan to ensure that the playground equipment is properly sanitized between use and that children follow social distancing guidelines? This seems nearly impossible to do. My concern is that if beach parking lots are reopened, San Clemente will become the go-to beach area for those who would normally go to, who would normally go to beaches and other areas that are closed or do not have available parking. This could lead to extremely crowded beaches, trails, and endanger everyone. I would suggest providing area residents with parking permits so they can resume parking on the streets. I live within walking distance of the beach but realize that not all San Clemente residents are so fortunate. Perhaps consideration can be given to providing off-site parking, the outlets, for San Clemente residents and shuttles to the beach for those who show proof of residence only. The shuttle should have limited capacities to support social distancing. I think it's too soon to allow passive use for beaches, the crowds at the Newport and Huntington beaches over the past weekend. And that's the allotted time for that comment. And next comment comes from Brian Murphy. Please reopen all city parks because the danger from the coronavirus has been grossly exaggerated by projections based on case fatality rates rather than infection fatality rates. Please send a letter to Gavin Newsom asking him to remove mandates to close businesses because such mandates clearly violate Section 1 of the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, deprivation of property without due process. Please open, please reopen all beaches and parking restrictions as the restrictions accomplish virtually nothing in terms of enhancing public safety. Please reopen the municipal pier for the same reasons, people should be free to practice their own distancing. Science no longer supports any of the above restrictions, maintaining restrictions increases poverty and destitution. Next comment comes from Al Cullen. I firmly believe you are way ahead of good health practices and the mandates by the governor as well as knowledgeable health officials in proposing to open public access and not enforce social distancing. Just look at the increasing confirmed cases over the weekend in OC. We do not need any more adverse publicity to our city's actions. Please do not enact any of the items that are proposed on this agenda.
Next comment is from James Murphy. I'm writing to you today for the first time to implore you to reopen the city of San Clemente without restriction, without hesitation. I'm a board-certified medical doctor, father of four young children, and my presence in San Clemente extends beyond three decades, including my time as a San Clemente junior lifeguard starting at the age of eight. There are two compelling arguments for immediate, for the immediate reopening of San Clemente. First, it is based on science, and the second is constitutional. While limited scientific evidence was available at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, that is no longer the case. We now have multiple antibody surveys from Stanford to New York to Miami that strongly support what was long suspected, that COVID-19 has a mortality rate very close to that of seasonal influenza. However, it should be noted that COVID-19 virtually spares anyone under the age of 18, differentiating itself from influenza in a fairly striking and important manner. Additionally, and tied to the second point, we now have a very clearly defined at-risk population which allows for a more targeted approach to viral transmission mitigation efforts. All right, that's the end of the time. Next is from Scott Stewart. Pool, please reopen the pool at Vista Hermosa and Ole Hansen. Next comment is from TJ Orr. In reopening our pier, our parks, pier, parking lots, passive use of beaches, please don't proceed with these actions at this time. Financial impacts on local and small, and all businesses and employees are indisputable, but they are just now beginning to be mitigated by federal and state assistance programs. These programs were instituted in part in anticipation of continued closures and stay-at-home mandates. City beach usage is already being dominated by residents of LA and other neighboring areas whose recreational facilities and associated park remain closed. The increased influx of these folks likely much higher incidence of COVID-19 as well as also allowing congregating and passive use further exposes residents of San Clemente. City marine safety personnel will also have increased exposure, workload, and expense. Parking already in short supply for San Clemente residents will likely be further impacted by more visiting folks once full open is announced. This also potentially, now opening city parks and foot traffic at the pier, this also applies potentially now opening city parks and foot traffic at the pier. Council has undeniably difficult, likely unpopular decision, however, leadership ultimately isn't about popularity. Next comment is from Kate Mudge. I would like to write in a public comment against reopening the city's parks, parking lots, restaurants, small businesses, et cetera, till such time is as determined to be safe by county, state, and federal agencies. I do not think the opinion of San Clemente citizens should overrule the guidelines set forth by government agencies. This is a global pandemic that we haven't seen in our lifetimes. Of course, I want businesses to succeed, but I can also see the need for lim, for limiting physical distancing, till such a time is it safe to interact again. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Brad Malamud. Council members are being asked to open public facilities, including parks, parking lots, skate parks, et cetera. Opening means everyone must take personal responsibility. If you are sick, you should always be careful doing, during flu or pandemic season. But for the young and healthy, common sense dictates far different conduct. The council opened up surfing and golfing but refused to allow children to play in the parks and further restricted residents east of the I-5 from parking anywhere near the beach. How sad that those west of the I-5 feel they don't share the beach. The current restrictions also prohibit a mother from watching her children play in the ocean. Who came up with these rules? Sunshine and fresh air are critical. Outdoor exercise is required. Parking is needed to use the beach and parks. Open the, the parks, the, open the beach parks, skate park, parking lots and streets tonight, effective tomorrow at 8:00 AM, removing all temporary restrictions. Suggest residents and employees wear masks and gloves as appropriate and distancing. Most will comply. Changing subjects. Okay, that's all the time we have.
Next comment comes from Jim Nguyen. I'd like to wholeheartedly support and encourage agenda items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Yes, open the parks. Yes, send a letter to the governor. Yes, open the lots. Yes, open the pier. Yes, allow passive uses on the beach. Next comment comes from Martina. Consideration of directing the interim city manager to plan and execute the reopening of all city parks no later than May 1st, 2020. Where does the date May 1st come from? Is it simply by coincidence it coincides with the planned protest? I do not understand demands for all city parks to be opened by a targeted date. The reason for the park closure is based around the reducing the risk of infection? That is true, stands to reason, the reopening should be based on what is acceptable rate of recent infection married with the new report rate, new reported rates of COVID-19 immunity. We wouldn't make more, wouldn't it make more sense to have a targeted goal to reopen the parks with a fluid date rather than a targeted date with no clear rational, rationale of what circumstances and conditions would make it reasonable to do so? To what extent would the parks be open? Will it be limited to playing in the grass and/or basketball courts, or will play structures and public washrooms will be opened and available for public use? If these amenities are open, will there be increased cleaning and sanitation schedule? If so, what are the projected costs involved with that be? And that's our time for that comment. And next comment comes from Bill Hart. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, City Council, regarding the upcoming agenda items 2 through 6, I would like to express my support for reopening recreational facilities while at the same time encouraging so, continued social distancing. I see many posts on social media every day. I see the shouting matches raging amongst a few dozen people while most residents remain silent, intimidated and hesitant to interject a little bit of common sense. The truth is, the vast majority of our community respects the dangers of the coronavirus and at the, at the same time believes we should be allowed to exercise freedom and good judgment. What I have observed on the beach trail, the beach, and in our neighborhoods and stores is a vast majority of San Clementeans have learned to respect each other's space, maintain social distancing, and wear face masks when appropriate. It is true that some vulnerable people shouldn't go to public spaces or don't feel comfortable going out at all. Well, that is their prerogative. Bottom line is, it's high time for city government to trust individuals to make their own decisions. There will be a small number of people who won't follow the guidelines, whether for ideological reasons or because they just aren't wired for making good choices. The honest truth is, we can't do anything about this, though. And that's our allotted time for that comment. Next comment is, good afternoon, my name is Megan Waller. I support the reopening of the skate park. Next comment is from Debbie Zonos. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and City Council members. My name is Debbie Flowers, a resident of Toleda. I appreciate the council's vote last week in the reopening of the city beaches and trails. I would like the council to take similar steps in reopening our city parks. Kids of all ages have been asked to stay home in light of this COVID-19 pandemic. For the past six weeks, they have and had everything they know taken from them. The ability to go to school, play sports, and socialize with friends have been replaced with unsettled fears. The opening of our parks will not only give our children the physical benefits that they so desperately need, but it will also be a step towards improving the well-being of our community. As of today, April 28th, the county website indicates that we have had 27,737 people tested for COVID-19 in Orange County. Of those, 2,151 people have tested positive, which is 7.75% of the total tested in the county. Approximately 65,405 people reside in San Clemente, which, of which only 45 people have tested positive. And that's the end of that comment. Next comment comes from Elizabeth Quarter. Please save our town, our families, and our businesses. Open the beaches, including passive use, the parking, the parking, the parks, the trails, restaurants, and businesses. Projections may have initially supported the severe restrictions and an abundance of caution, but now the existence of real data supports reopening our town. Please keep in mind that the choice of wearing or not wearing a face mask should be left to the individual. Many people have medical or personal reasons why they cannot wear a face mask, and no one is entitled to that information under HIPAA laws and constitutional protections. And next comment comes from Michelle Lincoln. Uh, to San Clemente City Council, dear council members, I am very optimistic about your consideration of our, to open our city parks and hope your consideration will include all of our tennis courts. I've been a resident of San Clemente since 1984 and now find myself with doctor's orders to engage in exercise two to three days per week that will cause my heart to work hard to cause me to break a sweat. Walking my dog three times per day is not enough strenuous exercise to strengthen my heart. I was playing pickleball, which was a perfect exercise for a 71-year-old body, but I know social separation was not possible, so those courts were closed. I turned to learning how to play tennis with a friend. We were able to maintain required distance and get some active exercise. Then someone decided to, decided those courts needed closing as well, which seemed punitive to many of us. Please open up all the San Clemente tennis courts, perhaps banning doubles if you are concerned about social distancing. We need a means to get some healthy exercise while working through this pandemic. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next comment is from Zach Gilmer. Sorry, next comment is from Zach Gilmer. Thank you for opening up the beaches again for exercise. This will undoubtedly prove to be beneficial to the mental and physical health of our community, assuming social distancing guidelines can be effective. As a resident, my thoughts on tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 2, open city parks and more space. We have to practice social distancing, the more successful we can be. Please use avoid, available resources to manage and oversee social distancing as recurring so people are at least six feet apart. People showing a blatant disregard for this should be made to leave and try again another day. Item 3, yes, please send a letter to Governor Newsom, layout and implement the plan to reopen our, our state. Take some action, get tests out there, start a soft opening of the state. We are a leader in locking down. We did a great job. Now we can be a leader in reopening. Item 4, do not open beach parking lots that are currently closed. We need to wait and see how our beach reopening works out if we, as a community, can effectively demonstrate social distancing and our COVID cases decrease. All right, that's the end of those comments. Next comment is from John Schilling. And he sent an email to council, but he asked it to be read tonight as well. It's not clear to me what role the San Clemente City Council has had on any of the local COVID-19 related restrictions, but I'm sure you've had a significant influence on the following. Sand-filled skate parks, closed beach parking, beach activities requiring constant movement, closed swimming pools, how ironic with vi, with virus-killing chlorine, closed parks, defining what is and what is not in a central business, causing irreparable economic harm, and many others. San Clemente has joined other national, state, and local leaders in violating our individual rights. Most citizens were willing to comply with shelter-in-place requirements for a short while to flatten the curve, to, and avoid overwhelmed hospitals. That has clearly happened. Outside of New York City and its unique situation, there is no unmanageable COVID-19 problem in the US. LA County is clearly the worst in California, and it too has uniqueness that is creating greater challenges than the rest of the state. Okay, I'll move on to the next comment from Mike Parkin. I support passive use of the beach. I support reopening of the skate park. I support reopening of businesses before there are no businesses. I'm, I'm sorry, we're still getting a lot of feedback. Maybe put some, put your phones on mute if, if they're not. I'll continue on with the next comment. Patrick Lubinski, please open the tennis court ASAP. It's ridiculous that these courts are closed at this point. Next comment is, uh, my name is Bodhi Aguilar, I'm nine years old. I don't think people should get in trouble for skateboarding. Please open the skate park. Thank you. My name is Sunshine Aguilar, seven years old. Please open the skate park. I love to skateboard so much and want to use the park for getting outside and exercising. Thank you. My name is Stephanie, and I support the immediate opening of the skate park. The skate park is a wide-open outdoor space, and as an individual sport, skaters do not physically come into contact with one another. It's easy for skaters to socially distance as needed. Thank you. Next comment is from Dana Morgan. I'm writing because of my concern regarding the proposed plan to reopen- I was playing pickleball, which was a perfect exercise for a 71-year-old body, but I know social separation was not possible, so those courts were closed. I turned to learning how to play tennis with a friend. We were able to maintain required distance and get some active exercise. Then someone decided those courts needed closing as well, which seemed punitive to many of us. Please open up all the San Clemente tennis courts, perhaps banning doubles if you are concerned about social distancing. We need a means to get some healthy exercise while working through this pandemic. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, next comment is from Zach Gilmer. Sorry, next comment is from Zach Gilmer. Thank you for opening up the beaches again for exercise. This will undoubtedly prove to be beneficial to the mental and physical health of our community, assuming social distancing guidelines can be effective. As a resident, my thoughts on tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 2, open city parks and more space. We have to practice social distancing the more successful we can be. Please use available resources to manage and oversee social distancing as recurring so people are at least six feet apart. People showing a blatant disregard for this should be made to leave and try again another day. Item 3, yes, please send a letter to Governor Newsom, layout and implement the plan to reopen our state. Take some action. Get tests out there. Start a soft opening of the state. We are a leader in locking down. We did a great job. Now we can be a leader in reopening. Item 4, do not open beach parking lots that are currently closed. We need to wait and see how our beach reopening works out if we, as a community, can effectively demonstrate social distancing and our COVID cases decrease. All right, that's the end of those comments. Next comment is from John Schilling. And he sent an email to council, but he asked it to be read tonight as well. It's not clear to me what role the San Clemente City Council has had on any of the local COVID-19 related restrictions, but I'm sure you've had a significant influence on the following: sand-filled skate parks, closed beach parking, beach activities requiring constant movement, closed swimming pools, how ironic with virus-killing chlorine, closed parks defining what is and what is not in a central business, causing irreparable economic harm, and many others. San Clemente has joined other national, state, and local leaders in violating our individual rights. Most citizens were willing to comply with shelter-in-place requirements for a short while to flatten the curve and avoid overwhelmed hospitals. That has clearly happened. Outside of New York City and its unique situation, there is no unmanageable COVID-19 problem in the U.S. L.A. County is clearly the worst in California, and it too has uniqueness that is creating greater challenges than the rest of the state. Okay, I'll move on to the next comment from Mike Parkin. I support passive use of the beach. I support reopening of the skate park. I support reopening of businesses before there are no businesses. I'm sorry, we're still getting a lot of feedback. Maybe put your phones on mute if they're not. I'll continue on with the next comment. Patrick Lubinski, please open the tennis court ASAP. It's ridiculous that these courts are closed at this point. Next comment is, my name is Bodhi Aguilar, I'm nine years old. I don't think people should get in trouble for skateboarding. Please open the skate park. Thank you. My name is Sunshine Aguilar, seven years old. Please open the skate park. I love to skateboard so much and want to use the park for getting outside and exercising. Thank you. My name is Stephanie, and I support the immediate opening of the skate park. The skate park is a wide-open outdoor space, and as an individual sport, skaters do not physically come into contact with one another. It's easy for skaters to socially distance as needed. Thank you. Next comment is from Dana Morgan. I'm writing because of my concern regarding the proposed plan to reopen city parks by May 1, 2020, and the proposed letter to be sent to Governor Newsom asking that California businesses begin to reopen no later than May 4. I'd like to know by what scientific grounds you are considering these moves. Of course, we all want to have things returned to normal as quickly as possible. However, these decisions must be made prudent and be based on science rather than emotion and wishful thinking. It's my understanding that health experts strongly recommend that cities and states employ much more extensive testing than we currently have in place, including comprehensive surveillance testing before such a move should be considered. I'm sure you must know that the recent protest to reopen the city businesses is not in actuality a grassroots movement, but has instead been formated by wealthy and powerful organizations from outside our community and state and which have ulterior motives. In other words, it's astroturfing. I'm already concerned about the lack of caution I see among other citizens. As I drive to pick up groceries, I see many small groups of adults and children. All right, next comment is from Patrick Lubinski. Please open the tennis courts. Next comment from Jason Kinworthy. For the meeting tonight, these are what members of my family have to say on why the skate park should be opened. We need a place to de-stress and unwind, and most importantly, have fun in these difficult and very uncertain times. If bikers can use the streets, skateboarders should be able to use the park, as we are already excluded from so many spots. As a father of five skateboarders and a skater myself, having another place to get some exercise and sunshine would be appreciated. Jason Kinworthy, age 47. Bella Kinworthy, age 13. Because it's a fun place where you can be outside from loyal. Kinworthy, age 11. So as kids can skate and have fun. From Wayland Kinworthy, age 9. So people can skate and get outside and exercise. From Peta Kinworthy, age 7. So we can skate it and have fun. From Indy Kinworthy. Because we can skate at the park. Next comment is from Gather Herbs. Rachel Davidson wrote, greeting, I'm a concerned citizen, parent, and currently unemployed service worker. I hope the city of San Clemente will speak on behalf of all its citizens. There are many factors to consider before rushing to open all businesses and public spaces. As I navigate the changes we are all confronted with on varying levels, I'm concerned about a few things. One, schools are closed until the fall, and online distant learning will be ongoing until the beginning of June. What plans or ideas are being discussed to support working families who returning to work cannot afford 40-plus hours a week for private childcare to also manage students' online learning? We need to come together to find ways to support families. All this requires consideration and understanding community needs. Getting back to work is important, but how is that accomplished and how it supports workers and families is also important. Is there a plan to provide more widespread testing? How will guidelines be enforced? There is clear evidence that has been illustrated by recent events that individuals and some businesses are not willing to follow basic distancing guidelines. Next comment is from Donna Vedreen. Fully support the council plan to execute the opening of all city parks, beaches, trails, and parking for parks, beaches, and trails. Our cases of COVID-19 have been smaller in number, and the residents of San Clemente have shown responsible action by social distancing and wearing face coverings, mostly following public health guidelines. The only exception to this is the two Sunday protests where persons gathered en masse with no social distancing or face coverings. The reason given for these protests was in opposition of the closing of our public spaces and businesses. If the parks, beaches, and businesses are reopened responsibly, we are being proactive in managing our community and resources responsibly. I support the reopening of our pier and allowing passive uses of our beaches. I support the reopening of the skate park so popular with our youth. Let's continue to demonstrate responsible leadership through our actions and follow the statistics, guidelines, and recommendations from our public health experts and elected leaders. Let's continue our efforts of education, communication, and our city and hold persons responsible for their actions. All right. Next comment is from Mia McLeish. Please get all of our outdoor open spaces inaccessible.
Next comment comes from Susan Nelson. I'm a bit concerned with the possibility of you considering opening our beaches and parks considering the mess we saw this past weekend. Newport is discussing closing their beaches due to the crazy numbers at the beach. If everyone else closes and we are opening, you will be overwhelmed with people. The OC fair was just canceled. People are going to want somewhere to go, and if we are open, they will come.
Okay, next comment is from Paul Murphy. I strongly urge you to close all, to continue to close all public beaches, parks, and trails until guidelines for reopening by Sacramento are strictly cleared, enforced, and confirmed. Do not listen to the reactionary minority of the community's citizenry that threaten democracy and public health with their fascistic tactics recently seen at anti-lockdown protests. Keep our people as safe as humanly possible, or we will suffer the worst yet to come. Next comment from Chris Hostetter. My name is Chris Hostetter, and I support a yes vote for Items 2 through 6. Next is from Susan Lippert. I'm a lifelong resident of San Clemente. I'm very upset and disturbed that our city has allowed the current anti-stay-at-home order protest to take place each weekend for the past several weekends. While I understand and do support freedom of speech and the right to hold public protest, I'm very concerned that these protesters are permitted to not social distance or wear masks. This puts all of us at further risk and continued risk for contracting COVID-19. I may lengthen the time for a statewide order. This is a loser situation for everyone. I took my family to the beach for a couple hours last Sunday. The lifeguards diligently enforced all the guidelines set forth for use for our beaches. I appreciate this very much, and it worked. While I was there, the beach was sparsely populated, and I enjoyed this access knowing we were doing the right thing and we were keeping our neighbors safe. On the other side, these protesters, many of whom descend on our city without masks, imagine yelling and shouting their slogans without masks near the farmer's market where the pedestrians are trying to walk by. The police do nothing. The ticket some folks. All right, next comment. Let's see here, sorry. I'm also reading some comments that are coming in as we speak. So, next comment. Yeah, next comment is Susan Nelson. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Give me one sec. So these are done? Okay, sorry. Let me just check our emails in real time here to make sure that we have no other comments on this item. Here's a comment from James Bacon. Worried about jumping the gun on opening facilities and spaces, no need to cause unnecessary public health risks. I don't want to draw outside residents to our beaches and cause spread of COVID-19. People in these comments don't seem to understand that even those who are healthy can spread it to their at-risk family members. It would be great to safely reopen, but it seems hard to enforce social distancing here, i.e. people of the recent protests not wearing masks in gatherings in a large group close together. Hope that we all do well through this and don't let disagreements on this tear us apart. And the last comment here is from Stephanie, Mark and Stephanie Moss. We are San Clemente, Orange County residents and small business owners. We urgently ask you to look at the actual real data and ignore the faulty models that were used to forecast and overwhelm of our hospitals and medical infrastructure. In the last two weeks, studies done in Germany, New York State, USC, and Stanford all came to the same conclusion, and that is about 20% of the population already had this virus. And when you adjust for those numbers, the mortality rate is less than a regular flu. The USC study was done in L.A. So our data is similar and found that approximately 450,000 people have already built antibodies. In Orange County, we must have similar numbers, and with under 40 deaths, it makes no sense to shut down the entire county. While every life is precious, we cannot go shutting down the lives of all residents over 40 deaths. If not, if so, why not shut down all McDonald's and donut shops? Heart disease kills 10 times as many. Or why, what about car accidents or the flu, which take more lives than this every year? The only way this can go, the only way to get over a virus is to build immunity. Vaccines are not 100% effective. The flu vaccine is less than 30% effective. And that is all we have for public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you so much, Laura. I have a question for the, and thank you so much for the people who submitted all the thoughtful comments tonight. But Scott, city attorney, I've been thinking about the limitation of the time limit tonight. We don't typically do that at meetings. Are you requesting that? Did you suggest that tonight because it's a special meeting? Because you and I corresponded earlier today, Scott, about, you know, to find council that if they wanted to reduce the time, they could. And I wrote back to you that, you know, it's awful to give people the full three minutes because people base their writings to us when they prepare their talking points or speeches based on knowing they'll have three minutes. Could you explain, perhaps explain the legal basis for reducing the time? I think that'd be good for the public to know as well. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. This was an issue that arises under the state's open meeting lots, also known as the Ralph Sem Brown Act. And the act requires that every agenda, special and general meetings, provide the public an opportunity to speak before the council's action on each item. And I guess in contemplation of events like this, where there might be so much public comment that it precludes the council even getting to action, Section 54954.3 of the Brown Act says that the city council may adopt reasonable regulations to ensure that the intent of the requirements for public comments is carried out, including but not limited to regulations limiting the total amount of time for public testimony on particular issues and for each individual speaker. So whereas tonight, the council has received, I think the clerk staff told me, 100 requests to speak, when you multiply that by three minutes per speaker, that would mean that the council and the public interested in hearing your deliberations would have to go on for five hours. With your clerks, as they did last time, called upon to read five hours' worth of emails, this section allows you and the public to shorten the time allotted to each speaker if the council chooses to do that in the interest of hearing from each person and in the interest of having the meeting reach a reasonable end, so the public can hear the council deliberate and decide the matters that they weigh in on.
Okay, thank you, Attorney, for providing that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, the last thing I wanted to suggest is that the public could be reassured that any excess that they've submitted that's not read tonight could be certainly forwarded to the council to read on their own and consider outside this meeting. Of course, you could ask that the clerk forward you the excess testimony for you to read offline.
Oh, of course. I would be glad to see as well. Thank you so much, city attorney. And then just one question for Laura, Deputy State Clerk. Do you know why the YouTube comments are off tonight during the live video feed?
They are now on. We received a comment that they were turned off, and apparently they've been turned on, so they should be live now.
They should be. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Laura. All right, so in following the Rosenberg rules, we'll, I'll invite a motion, and then a second, and then we'll do a discussion. So for this item pertaining to the consideration of directing the interim city manager to plan and execute the reopening of all city parks no later than May 1, 2020, do we have a motion?
I have some questions of staff.
Oh, well, let's see. Okay, well, we didn't have a staff report, but I guess you can go ahead and ask questions. So feel free to do that, Councilmember Hamm.
Thanks. Hey, Bob, this is Chris Hamm. Can you just clarify for me, are parks currently open in the city of San Clemente?
Councilmember, members of the city council, the city's passive parks are open today. Those are the ones that we do not have active team sports playing on them. So consider all the neighborhood parks and issues of that nature while there might be playground equipment in them. We do not have ball fields with backstops and things of that nature. And so all of those parks were never closed, and so they're open today. The active parks, those are the ones like this, the Hermosa Park that has baseball fields with backstops and soccer fields. Those active parks are the ones that have been closed, along with other specialty facilities that the city has that supports active recreation, like the skate park and the O'Hanlon Swim facility. And so those have been closed for some period, but otherwise, all the other remaining parks are open today.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, this is Gene James. I have a question for the city manager.
Yes, please.
So, Mr. City Manager, where we have restrooms in the parks, are those restrooms open? And how often are we sanitizing them?
Councilmember James, members of the council, yes, the restroom facilities are open in all of our parks where they are located. And I understand that we have, I'm not sure exactly how many we have, but they are throughout the community. As to how often they are cleaned, I will ask Mr. Bonniget, who is responsible for that, to provide the council some information. Mr. Bonniget, I hope you are on the line, and I'll turn it over to you if that is the case.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. This is Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. And in answer to Councilmember James's question, the restrooms are cleaned daily. They get a roof-to-floor cleaning and disinfection. In summer, we go to twice daily cleaning, and on summer holidays, they get three times per day service.
Does that answer the question? Oh, go ahead.
This is Gene. I think that really answered my question and made me feel good. So right now, we're at, just to recapture this, right now, we're at twice a day.
Currently, I have to confirm when the summer service, we are still generally, and I'm pretty sure we're in our daily service. I think it's Memorial Day weekend, we shift to our summer schedule.
You know, in due of the concerns with COVID-19 and all, you know, I'm speaking to the other council members now, I think it might be wise to direct staff to take that to twice a day. That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember James? All right, so that said, before we do discussion, do we have a motion for this item, to pass this item?
This is Chris Hamm. I have one more question of staff. Can someone answer whether or not the golf course is going to reopen?
Councilmember Hamm, members of the city council, the staff has been working with our operator at the golf course, and we anticipate that it will open, I believe, this Saturday, but I'll defer to Mr. Sun, who has been in direct communication with the operator. So, Mr. Sun?
Thank you, interim city manager Dunick. This is Assistant City Manager Eric Sun. Yes, myself and our Recreation Manager Samantha Wiley have been working diligently with the pro shop, and a press release will be forthcoming probably either Wednesday or Thursday announcing the opening of the municipal golf course for Saturday, opening with county guidelines that have been provided by the county for golf operations being applied. The press release will go into the new process for booking tee times online and paying online, and then there'll be some other information. But our intention is to get that press release out either tomorrow or Thursday and with an opening on Saturday. And I know Recreation Manager Samantha Wiley's on this meeting as well. Is there anything, Samantha, that you would like to add as well?
I have nothing to add at this point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions, council of staff?
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, this is Gene James. I'd like to ask the city manager, is there anything that precludes, I'm going to ask two questions, the tennis court from opening immediately? That seems to be a no-brainer. That's my first question, and I'll allow you to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember James, members of the council. I believe, and let me defer to Samantha Wiley because she's been working on that issue. We, I'm not sure if we've removed the tennis court nets or have just locked the facility, how long it would take to remedy either of those two actions. So, Ms. Wiley, can you respond to that question?
Yes, thank you, interim city manager Dunick. This is Samantha Wiley, Recreation Manager. We have not removed the nets. The gates have been locked. We could get our tennis courts up and running certainly by Friday, if not Saturday. We would want to go through and make sure that the courts are clear of any debris and safe for play. Beyond that, we would look to post signage regarding social distancing requirements and evaluate the use of those benches and look at any shared touch points, if you will, to make sure that people aren't touching all the same spots. But certainly, USTA is recommending singles only, but that could be a direction that council chooses to go forward. Tennis is naturally a socially distant sport. Even in doubles, they typically are. Even in doubles, they typically are six to 10 feet apart.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions?
So, I have a follow-up question, and probably Samantha or Bob. So, the skate park, is there anything that precludes us from opening that today, or tomorrow, or this week?
Uh, council member James, members of the council, I think physically the answer to that question is, I don't think, no, there's nothing that would preclude us from opening that facility, other than our ability to maintain proper social distancing in that facility might be more difficult, given the way that it's used. The staff had contemplated some procedures that might be able to put in place to help us control the amount of people in the facility at one time. Again, for those of you who have been down to the farmer's market, it'd be a similar action. We've contemplated that, and it's one of the things that we would have been discussing with the council on Tuesday night and next week as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, Jean James. The, absent any other questions, I guess what I would like to do is have an alternate motion, an alternative motion, giving staff until May 8. Would you be amenable to that, to come back, to open the remaining parks?
I'd actually like to see them open this week, so I'd actually like to see them open this week. The sooner the better. People are thirsting at the seams to get out and get new parks, because I know I had suggested we open all the recreational facilities last week, and I'd like to see that happen. People are ready. The weather is beautiful, and people have been inside long enough, and I don't know, I'd love to see it be done this week, so I wouldn't support that motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I don't disagree at all. Can we have some feedback from the city manager on that option, please?
Absolutely. Bob?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem Ferguson, council member Hamm. In my conversations with staff, some of the facilities we're talking about will take us longer than certainly May 1st to open. For example, the playground equipment that is at many of our parks has been modified to ensure that it's not being used currently. It will take us longer to do that certainly than May 1st, so additional time would be, I think, staff's request, by which to try and ensure that we can have all facilities open, and certainly, we can open those that are easier, faster, but there would be some that I believe we would have a very difficult time trying to ensure we have them all open by May 1st.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. Could we open some before then? Because that means a whole nother weekend without parks. And also, second to that, since the city has removed that 37 tons of sand from the skate park, can we just reopen that this week? I mean, what's to stop us from opening that one tomorrow? I guess we're getting into discussion now, and we can do it that way if we'd like, because it has been done in the past that way. It's just these are procedures for us, not substantive, so if we want to do discussion now, we can, because it sounds like we're leading that way, so let's go ahead and do that. Bob, would you mind answering that question about getting the skate park open tomorrow?
Certainly, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, as well as just a few moments ago, and it is really a degree to which the council wishes to have staff try and to monitor the amount of social distancing that could be in play at that park during the day and at other times. It's not a facility that lends itself. Of course, if the council feels that everyone would self-enforce, then that's really your judgment, but if you want us to ensure that we can, in fact, provide for proper social distancing, then staff's recommendation, I think, would be to provide force of fencing and to staff that facility to allow so many people in at one time, to ensure there would be proper social distancing, and allow someone new to get in when someone else leaves. So if the council would desire for that to occur, it may take us longer certainly than tomorrow to make that occur. So it's really council's desires.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And I know I jumped ahead to the skate park, because it's something I'd love to see open in the community, has expressed that as well, but how about the parks, I'm back to the parks and opening some of them, but not all. I understand that it does take some time, and thank you for explaining what is involved in that in terms of the manpower to do that, but how about on a rolling basis? Could we come up with a schedule to open parks on a rolling basis, say, starting this week through May 8? Is that doable?
Well, of course. I think the issue, again, as I mentioned earlier, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, that all of the passive parks are open. What is not available at some of those passive parks, obviously, is the playground equipment. On a rolling basis, we certainly could start to take down the barriers that prevent that use, not having them all done, but we could have them all done by a certain timeframe into the future. If you differentiate between the active parks and the passive parks, the active parks are the ones that are closed, and the passive ones are the ones that are open. The active parks is where we have team sports and activities like that. One of the issues that led to exposure were entire teams of soccer players going down doing pickup games, or even something that got organized by coaches, and consequently, we are getting a lot of complaints about the lack of social distancing at those facilities. And so, it depends on whether the council feels that, again, social distancing is an important process, and that we should not have active team sports, where people are playing like 11-on-11, or whatever the sport might call for, or if, you know, it will reverse to a certain degree, where I would say, if someone is on their own, an individual who is out there running around on the facilities, jogging, running, or they're kicking a soccer ball, that's not something that we've been overly concerned with in those facilities, but we would be concerned, to the extent that the council would be, about our ability to maintain proper social distancing if those parks were to reopen, as long as that's not a consideration, then that certainly is not an issue for the staff, and then we could open those up on a rolling basis as well.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I thought that, excuse me, I'm not finished. I have one more follow-up question, council member Hamm, please. But I was reading that the under 40, we don't have the issue with the social distancing for those under 40. Is that not the case anymore?
I do not believe that the state's order differentiates by age.
Okay, okay, so we just have to decide if the council. All right, thank you, Bob, so much. I appreciate that information. And council member Hamm? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Jean, I think I have a solution that's going to work for everybody here. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come back with a comprehensive plan to reopen the parks at our next council meeting, which is in five days on May 5. I second that.
Okay, that's wonderful. We have motion by council member Hamm, and we have a second from council member Jean, and consideration of directing the interim city manager to plan and execute the reopening of all parks by May 5, 2020. And, I'm sorry, council member Ward, did you have a question?
I can't, it's kind, I can't hear you very well. Council member Ferguson, the only comment that I would have is that our passive parks are currently open. I understand that there's a will by some council members and some of the public to open all our parks. I think with what the governor said today about distancing and hanging in there a couple weeks longer, that we are close to being able to get to phase two, as long as we all keep cooperating. I'm not going to be for moving this to the next meeting. I think we should just, we're getting ahead of ourselves. This shouldn't even be an agenda tonight, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Do you have any further questions, council member Ward, before I take a roll call on the vote?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, could I just interrupt real quick?
Excuse me?
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, we do have one last comment that came in during deliberations. Normally, we would accept speaker cards during that time. Do you want to hear the comment?
Please.
Okay. Real quick, it's from David, Dave Poro. I'm writing to ask that council consider allowing the pool at Vista Hermosa open to accommodate some of the competitive swimmers who are on San Clemente aquatics. There are athletes that are home from college, swimmers that have been recruited and will join NCAA swim team in the fall, and local age group swimmers who are missing valuable pool time. I ask that the city work with Coach Goran to put in place a protocol that would allow a swimmer in each lane. This allows for a six-foot-plus separation. Do not open the locker rooms and have the swim club be a participant in the cleaning and sanitation of the touch services that would be used during workouts. Please allow those club swimmers who are residents of our city to get back to training. And that is all for public comments.
Make a motion to close, pull the comment.
Okay. All in agreement to close public comments? Say yea?
Aye.
Okay, aye. All right, aye. All right, thank you so much for closing public comment, and let's go ahead and take a roll call on the vote. We had a motion by mayor Hamm, and a second by council, I'm sorry, council member Hamm, and a second by council member Jean.
Thanks for the promotion.
Again, for consideration of directing the interim city manager to plan and execute the reopening of all parks by May 5, 2020, and let's go ahead and take a vote. Council member Ward?
This is Chris Hamm. I need to clarify my motion, that was to bring back a comprehensive plan on May 5.
Bring back the comprehensive plan by May 5, so not open by May 5. I missed that, excuse me. Do we have a second? Well, we had a second by council member Jean. Okay. All right. And I'm a yes on that as well, so this motion passes three to one. Mr. One? Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. One, first against the motion. Oh, I thought you voted no. No, I didn't vote at all. My vote is an aye. An aye, okay, perfect. I'm having a real hard time hearing you, but the others are coming in so clear, so my apologies. So that motion passes for zero. Okay, so the next item we have on the agenda is the consideration of sending a letter to Governor Newsom urging him to reopen businesses with appropriate safeguards no later than May 4, 2020. And Laura, we have public comment on this item?
We do have several public comments on this item as well. Shall I go ahead and get started reading them?
Thank you. Yes, please.
First comment is from Hoyan Ip, council and supervisor Bartlet. I wanted to start with this with my gratitude for how much personal life you've sacrificed during the COVID-19 crisis. But first, my heart goes out to the mom and pops for the reasons mentioned in the city's draft letter to Governor Newsom, supervisor Bartlet, and Dr. Quick. I don't have the knowledge to suggest when to reopen businesses, but we should not hesitate to plan the reopening. The governor formed a task force on business and jobs recovery, the county formed Business Recovery Committee, and tomorrow Newport will discuss a similar committee. I suggest a San Clemente committee to save the uniqueness of the town. A few stakeholders I have in mind in alphabetical order: artists, art lifts our spirits, environmentalists, I don't have to convince San Clemente on this, and did I hear many times at UCI, climate change would bring widespread and deadly diseases. Foreign affairs expert, how is Hong Kong able to keep the virus at bay while people are still going to restaurants, taking subways, using reusable shopping bags? Humanities expert. All right, that is it for the first public comment. Next is from Kathleen Laven. Please open all San Clemente, including small businesses, mobile businesses, and gyms. Next comment is from John Martinez, professor of law emeritus. You have our support for reopening San Clemente is set out in the draft letter to be considered by council today. The qualification we offer is that safeguards have to be assiduously pleased, because people tend to relax and become lackadaisical once restrictions are eased. Just as people speed when they think no patrol cars around, people will go back to old habits if no one is watching. Mask gloves and social distancing should be maintained, and new sanitizing requirements for establishments should also be put in place. The practices at the Costco in San Juan Capistrano are an excellent role model to follow. Keep up the good work. Next comment is from Ryan Wilkinson. Dear San Clemente council, I urge you to strongly consider opening business back up in San Clemente. The quarantine's primary objective was to slow the spread of COVID so that the hospitals would not be overwhelmed. Based on the data and the initial models, quarantine seemed like the most prudent thing to do. However, with all the new data that's been received, it appears that the COVID was much more widespread than initially anticipated, thus having lower hospitalization rates and death rates than initially forecasted. The hospitals are now having to furlough employees because they're empty. It's imperative that we have strong leadership and we bring back business to San Clemente while they're still in a position to operate. If this continues on much longer, many of the businesses will not have the ability to reopen. Those that have pre-existing conditions and comorbidities still have the option to stay at home and protest, protect themselves. We, as a community, can help by shopping for them until a herd immunity is achieved. The small business owner does not have an option to protect their family if we continue to keep the businesses closed. Next comment is from Tom Settles. I just learned today's, of today's city council meeting and the agenda topics you intend to address. First, I want to thank you for your willingness to address these important issues at a time where the importance of public health and the risk of economic disaster seems to be at odds. I strongly believe we have evolved to a place where our ability to respond to the virus positions us to move forward in a reasoned manner that avoids the effects of lost jobs, income, homes, et cetera, associated with the long-term shutdown. Taking measured steps to reopen beaches was courageous, and I urge you to follow that with further actions you intend to discuss today. We all have different tolerances for fear, and I respect everyone's feelings about where we are in this fight. To those who remain fearful or are at high risk, should continue to follow stricter guidelines. But for the balance of us, which increasingly seems to be a majority, it's time to get things moving more rapidly. All right. Next comment is from Mary Lou Smith. I wish to register my adamant objection to sending a letter to Governor Newsom urging him to consider reopening businesses no later than May 4. While I fully sympathize with the severe impact on local business and residents, the health of all citizens can and must take precedence over economics. The next date being considered for reopening is May 15, or 11 days later. California has not met the president nor governor's guidelines required prior to opening. What good are well-thought-out national and state plans based on science and medicine if local leaders, who have no substitute plans in place, try to undermine those plans that have had national, regional, and international input? San Clemente is not an island. We need to be part of the county, state, regional, and national fight to beat this enemy, and it takes all of us to join together in our mutual effort to do so. Please do not take this proposed action, and let's be certain in this important election year, that local and national politics do not enter this arena. Mary Lou Smith.
Next comment comes from William Crutner. Reopening on a schedule determined by non-scientific staff or local elected officials is an objectively bad idea. The recent protest was attended by people from neighboring counties in flagrant disregard for the desires of city council, that the limited local reopening be for the benefit of locals, and an obvious violation of the statewide stay-at-home order. Fewer masks or maintain social distancing. They put everyone attending in the farmer's market at unnecessary risk. It was also well-attended by an abundance of conspiracy theorists from Quinon to anti-vaccine, in addition to plenty of people simply ignorant of the legal precedent for these kinds of restrictions. I hope our city council isn't similarly afflicted. With all due respect, Councilman Jean's suggestion is uninformed and completely at odds with the developing understanding of coronavirus mitigation. The agenda says that the next meeting will be by teleconference. Here's a tip: if council can't meet in person, things should not be reopened. I urge you to align the city's reopening with the guidelines, and that's all the time that we have for that comment. Next comment comes from Alan Basso. Dear San Clemente city council, I strongly urge you to consider opening businesses back up in San Clemente. The quarantine's primary objective was to slow the spread of COVID-19 so that the hospitals would not be overwhelmed. Based on the data and the initial models, the quarantine seemed like the most prudent thing to do. However, with all the new data that has been received, it appears that COVID was much more widespread than initially anticipated, thus having lower hospitalization rates and death rates than initially forecasted. The hospitals are now having to furlough employees because they are empty. It is imperative that we have strong leadership and we bring back business to San Clemente while they are still in a position to operate. This continues on a much longer, many of the businesses will not have the ability to reopen. Those that have pre-existing conditions and comorbidities still have the option to stay at home and protect themselves. We, as a community... protect themselves. We, as a community, can help by shopping for them until a herd immunity is achieved. The small business owners does not have an option to protect their family if we continue to keep the businesses closed. The data drove us to make the decision to shut down, then we should analyze all of the updated data that will lead us to the decision to open back up. Thank you for hearing my concern. Next comment comes from Frank Martin. Dear sirs, since the city council is considering opening all city parks on May 1 and additionally urging Governor Newsom to open the entire state by May 4, I would like to understand the primary basis for your decision. Will the decision primarily be based on the medical situation, economic considerations, or some third issue? Respectfully submitted. And the next comment comes from Trey Trask. Dear San Clemente City Council, I've been a resident of San Clemente now for four years. I live on my own, I live and own my home in the Reserve off Avenue to Vista Hermosa. My family has been in full support of, for going into quarantine, stay-at-home shelter mode since back in early mid-March. We have strictly followed the guidelines and continue to do so, both out of our own fear and desire to beat COVID as a community, but also to respect our neighbors and community. However, based on the data that has been recently provided in conjunction with maintaining some social distancing standards with others in public spaces, we should now be in place to ease back into the normal ways of life and reopen businesses. That's all the time we have for that item. And this one is from San Clemente Chamber of Commerce, Burton Brown, Chairman of the Board. As you're well aware, many of our San Clemente businesses, including most of our restaurants, are being severely impacted by our collective measures to combat the COVID outbreak. Many small businesses, including restaurants, have already closed permanently. With us being a small, vibrant coastal town, our community and character is defined by our local restaurants and stores. It is tough to sit back and watch further demise of our business community. We would encourage the city council to take note of this community's concerns regarding the closure of businesses and the quarantine of our citizens, and to make every measure possible to collaborate with experts and work on, work to reopen our town in a safe, responsible manner. We agree that in the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis, it was prudent to take measures to protect Californians. We applaud the various proactive measures taken early on by the state and county. However, the time has now come to reassess the threat of this virus as we now work towards restarting the economic engine that drives our nation. It is our belief that the state and county have a moral obligation to reverse the harm that has been done to our small businesses. We respect that the city council take appropriate action to nudge the governor and county officials. And that's all the time we have for that comment. Next comment comes from Larry Thomas. Dear city council members, good evening, and thank you for your service and support of San Clemente, as well as your transparency in all duties and tasks. Further, thank you for city staff leadership focused on specifically linked to CD-19 implication. Good decisions and implementations have been made from the start of this crisis and continue. I want to share my voice aligned to slow and steady turtle versus the hare. Speed in reopening our beloved city. There are plenty of stats on sides regarding the subject of reopening, and plenty of passion for fear to include "I want my life back" position within our fine city residents and business owners. That stated, we have a window of time to be right or wrong to get this done right. My voice is to stay aligned with county and state positions. Let's not get ahead of the bigger picture as we run this together. Let us also manage emotion while noting financially there is a big risk if we, city of San Clemente, get ahead of the county and state positions. We must be protective against liability risk. Where safe, small steps can be taken, please take them. Where greater risk exists, and that's all the time we have for that comment. Next comment comes from Barbara St. John. I just wanted to say that I think a broad reopening of San Clemente is not in the best interest of the health and welfare of our city. However, I believe that a scientific basis should be used to consider each of the locations for reopening. For example, having groups of people congregating on the beaches defy science in not limiting social contact to six feet, which will potentially cause a spread of the virus. As well as opening the pier and the beach trail makes no sense as there is bidirectional walking traffic that is impossible to maintaining social distancing, especially in narrow areas. It is really risky to be walking on the trail and have a sweaty runner go by you the other way within a few feet. It's been showed that exercise with increased breathing creates a super emitter that can spread it, that can spread a distance of 25 feet. However, opening the golf course to walkers makes scientific sense as you can easily keep your distance from other walkers. Of course, golfing and dogs should still be restricted. Our city has, our city has had several new cases reported in the last week. Could this be a result of the protesters on Del Mar recently with no face mask? And that's all the time for that comment.
All right, next comment is from Helen, excuse me, Helen Green. I think the letter to Governor Newsom is great. If we look at the actual factual cases in Orange County, a 3.1 million people compared to the unfortunate loss of life is staggeringly low. I also think that people need to take care of their personal hygiene, and hair salons and nail salon should be opened as well. San Clemente has numerous salons. I applaud you for taking the steps to get us all back to work in a community again. I think Governor Newsom second-guesses the intelligence of the people and think that we are not going to practice safety for ourselves and others. I also think the schools should open so parents can go back to work. Children have always been exposed to different childhood diseases that build their immune system for the future. Everything can be opened again with common sense and safe practices. We were pleased you opened up the beach trail. Is that as our daily early morning exercise? However, all the parking spaces being blocked off early in the morning is a challenge for those that are handicapped and wish to utilize our trail as well. Thank you for supporting the residents of San Clemente. Next comment is from Thomas Thomason. Please support local businesses and allow San Clemente businesses to open. Also, please send a letter to our governor asking him to allow businesses to reopen. Next comment, James and Janice Kemp. In our, in our opinion, the draft letter to be sent to governor is not necessary. It appears to give power to the governor that he does not possess. The letter seems to request permission instead of stating our city's planned action. If a letter is to be sent, the city should clarify that it has decided to take immediate action, and it will follow its own judgment as to the safety and well-being of its residents and businesses. Good intentions are not sufficient to justify capricious state mandates. The city has the power to do whatever it sees fit on these local matters. The citizens of San Clemente were born with common sense. Common sense is all that is needed to keep our city safe. Next comment, Steve Judd. We all want to return to normal, but as-
Excuse me, Laura?
Yes.
Hi, excuse me, Laura. This is Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson. I just wanted to just interrupt briefly because this is some really good news. The Orange County Board of Supervisors unanimously votes five to zero to reopen businesses with safety guidelines. So just wanted to say that. I thought that was worth hearing news tonight. So please continue the comments.
Okay. Next comment is from Steve Judd. We all want to return to normal, but as we transition from stage one to stage two during this pandemic, we need to do so based not only on local data and indicators, but we also take into consideration that many of our visitors are from out of town and may be potentially COVID-19 positive. We cannot control what they choose to do in back hometowns, but we can, we can when they are visiting our community. As visitors to our great city, they must abide by our rules and should all San Clemente residents. To reiterate, we need to rely on the best data available and what the health experts say rather than a small group of vocal protesters who have their own agendas. Moving to stage two will still require continued behavior modification, social distancing and enforceable restrictions to protect essential workers, customers, businesses, and our fellow citizens. A protective plan to normalization must be presented, approved by the appropriate city departments, and enforceable to allow all businesses in San Clemente to reopen or to remain open. All right. Next comment is from Anne Marie Hines. Good evening, council. Last Saturday while walking home from our beautiful beach visit, a young girl was sitting on the stairs in front of her residence. I heard her talking on her phone about it being more stressful to not be working. I also noticed a for rent sign in front of her place. I felt sad for her and all like her. According to the Wall Street Journal, 22 million Americans have filed for unemployment in about four weeks' time. The stress in these people's lives is more likely to make them ill instead of, instead of COVID-19. It is time to open up San Clemente and let people live productive lives again. The statistics for this virus are presently no worse than the seasonal influenza. States and countries that have chosen to stay responsibly open are not suffering from high rates of deaths. San Clemente and the state of California must responsibly open and give people the freedom to decide what is best for their health by taking steps to protect the elderly and the vulnerable. All of us should be able to resume our daily activities. In all of the comfort and blessings God has given us, we've grown lazy and forgotten the principles that this country was founded on. While cannonballs were rolling through the streets of Boston and deadly diseases plagued the colonies, okay, done with that comment.
And next comment comes from Martina. And good evening, council. This is a challenging time for all of us, especially for those who were either elected or hired to take leadership roles within the city. We need to be both proactive, measured, and responsible at a time when anger, frustration, fear, resentment are provoking a reactionary, if not revolutionary, response. In San Clemente, we have many dedicated citizens that donate their time and expertise, who work with council and various commissions that help guide and advise council on specific issues and needs. With that being said, has council considered the possibility of creating a special health crisis task force made of physicians and other professionals in the medical field to help advise council when and how we should move to reopen parks and other common areas, and to help create guidelines for a small business to follow, to help reduce the risk of COVID exposure once the shelter-in-place order is lifted or is less restrictive? I think with only two new reported cases of COVID within the last two weeks, and that's all the time we have for that one. And next comment comes from Linda Ray. Dear city council members, we fully support sending the letter to Governor Newsom, Chairperson Bartlett, and Dr. Quick, forming them of our intention to reopen San Clemente businesses as of 5/1 with the appropriate safeguards in place. We also support reopening the pier, beaches, parks, trails, and beach parking lots. Let's remember when this all started. We were all told we needed to stay home for two weeks to slow the spread and flatten the curve, so our hospitals are not overwhelmed. It was never to, irradiate, irradiated the virus? Well, here we are, six weeks later, and the curve, which never really was a curve in California, Orange County, or San Clemente is flat. And as of the result of the curve never materializing, hospitals, which canceled all elective surgeries, are furloughing and laying off doctors and nurses as their financial situation deteriorates. How ironic. So let's start the process of reopening San Clemente businesses, parks, beaches, and get our economy going again before it's too late. If people are fearful because they're in a high-risk group or just fearful by nature, they can and should stay home. But those of us who rely on the facts and data to make our own decisions about how we chose, we choose to live, how we choose, and that's all the time we have. And next comment comes from Ashley Fox. If we open early, I think the answers to the questions are prudent to consider. How will customers, employees know that they are going to be safe if the volume isn't there with these businesses fail? If they only have 25% to 50% of their customer base, will they be able to make it? Should we do some market research to see what percentage of the population will actually patronize these establishments? Many of the employees will be unable to collect unemployment if they go back to work, and will likely have their income significantly impacted due to less volume in restaurant shops, et cetera. Have you factored for this? Can you ensure that we have adequate testing and medical care available in local hospitals if this goes poorly? What percentage of the population in San Clemente is vulnerable, over 65 or with a pre-existing condition? How will you protect business establishments who open from liability if they expose their patrons, customers to this virus, and they get sick? Will you, will you require the public and patrons to wear masks and to help reduce potential spread? And that's all the time we have for that comment.
And that's all we have for public comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Laura. Those were wonderful comments from the community.
Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem, Steve James. You know, I read, you know, I read about the OC Board of Supervisors vote just before we came in, into session, and I was wondering if the city attorney could have a legal opinion for us on how that impacts us before we go into discussion on this matter.
That's a great idea, Councilmember James. Scott, could you please share?
Thanks. Mayor Pro Tem and Councilwoman Scott Smith, the city attorney. The city adopted an emergency declaration, as the council knows, and that declaration left to the auspices of the county and the state what restraints there might be on business closures and business openings. And so now, as far as the city goes, and it has no effect on our emergency declaration, and then I guess it will be, it will remain between the state and the county and those businesses to sort out the terms of their reopening. But the city did not interject itself into the operations of private businesses at all.
This is Chris Ham. Can I make a motion to close public comments?
Mayor and Council, this is Scott again. Having started and given the opportunity to some people, I'm afraid that that motion would be inconsistent with state law that requires us to finish hearing comments from the remainder of the public who've commented on this item.
We heard from Laura. That was the last comment, Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I was, I was getting ready to answer the question about businesses. I beg your pardon, Councilman.
Give a motion. A second, can we vote?
Mayor Pro Tem, I think that request is directed again, yeah.
Councilwoman Ward? To close the public comments?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Ham?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, I'm an aye. So that passes four to zero. Thank you. All right. Would you like to have a dis- I'm sorry, who is that?
Mayor Pro Tem, this is Gene James. Can we continue with, I've got a few questions for Scott in regards to-
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Mr. City Attorney. So based on what the County Board of Supervisors has voted on five to zero today, can our businesses open immediately?
Um, well, that, let me find, I don't know. It's going to be up to them. Councilman, the, the governor's order still directs people to stay at home unless they're involved in essential governmental functions, and those are defined under federal guidelines. So I, I think that there's going to be an interesting question about whether, whether a business can feel unencumbered by the governor's order because the Board of Supervisors has lifted its restrictions. If I were a business owner, I would expect to need to conform my activities to the county health order and also to the governor's order.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, if I could inject a comment, I think it's pertinent to the issue. This is the inner-city manager. Just for the, I think, identification of the council, I am looking at the Orange County business guidelines as voted upon by the board, but I did receive a copy of. I think what's informative as it relates to this, it says in the very first section under scope, "These guidelines do not supersede any conflicting or more restrictive orders issued by local governments, the state of California, or the federal government." Consequently, I think with the county, I would, I don't know if Mr. Smith has seen this order yet that was done by the board, but it would strike me that what the governor did today in laying out his various steps towards reopening the state that the county has already said that, to the extent to which the state is more restrictive, then their actions would not supersede those.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I'd stand by my prior answer. That a business owner, I think, ought to, especially in light of what the, what the Board of Supervisors said, ought to conform the business to the directors of the state and the county.
Mayor Pro Tem, Kathy Ward? Yes, please, Kathy. Councilmember Ward?
I would just like to make a comment about the county. Anyone that wrote to us that said, "Please reopen the businesses," our city council doesn't have any say in that. We didn't close them. That was a state order that closed all non-essential businesses, and all our businesses did comply. And we all did a very good job of what the state needed us to do to try to stop the spread of the virus. And that's why the county and the state today probably made the comments that they did. The governor said that we are now in phase one. If it continues that we are flattening the curve, and the county can get some things in place, we can go into phase two. And I would imagine that's probably what the county talked about today. I want to read something, though. The Board of Supervisors does have a business recovery ad hoc committee. It consists of Supervisor Don Wagner and Supervisor Michelle Steele. This is a statement from that ad hoc committee. Much like other states and surrounding counties, we are looking to safely and responsibly reopen our dwindling economy. Chairwoman Michelle Steele and Supervisor Wagner are soliciting best practices from the top business and healthcare professionals to create a roadmap for a reopened Orange County. All actions will be under the guidance of the Orange County Healthcare Agency while leveraging the latest science. It is important to note, Orange County- It is important to note, Orange County cannot contravene the governor's orders. Orange County Health Reports indicate the curve is flattening and dipping downwards. We must assure that the lifeblood of our community does not flatline. It is unsustainable to continue keeping our healthy workforce and industry out of business with no end in sight. We must strike a responsible balance." That comment tells me, as a council member, that they are trying to reopen the businesses safely, and they are going to have to do it under the order of the governor. And there were several things that had to be in place. And I think our council might be better, this next council meeting, having our staff consider and giving us a staff report of what those requirements are. And we write a note to the county urging them to get those implemented as soon as possible. And how can our city help get that done? I think that would be better than, um, the letter we're looking at tonight. And that's just my comment.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ward. Now, if I may clarify your request of staff, are you looking that they take a look at the Orange County Business Guidelines that were adopted today and, and bring that to the council? And then we send a letter, draft a letter? I'm trying to understand what your request is, specifically.
I, I think the staff needs to get back to us with what the county actually did today. And maybe some recommendations of what needs to get in place. And that's what we need to urge our Board of Supervisors to get going. I think it has to do with testing and contact tracing and isolation of people that are sick. And all those procedures need to get in place or we aren't going to get to phase two. And that's what I think we need to urge the county to do because I think we all, including Councilmember James, who wants to write this letter, I think we all want this to happen. But it has to happen safely and, and by the steps that we are required to follow.
Right, very, very good. Yes, and I did follow up with the county a couple weeks ago, and they, they were not doing the contact tracing, if that is in fact what they're going to do, though not at the time. However, I support that. Is that a motion, Kathy? Would you like to put that into a motion? That sounds very good to me. So would you like to do so? Make a motion?
May, may I have some comments there?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Does this, Councilmember James?
It is.
Okay, great.
I respect, I, I respect everything Kathy just said. However, we sheltered in place. We did what they told us to do. Our small businesses here in town are suffering. They're dying on us. This is a difference I truly believe. And I, you know, I've spoken with a lot of restaurateurs, I've spoken with shopkeepers. Two weeks is the difference between a third of our small business, businesses failing and half of the small, of small businesses failing. Time is not on, on, on the, on, on, on the side of our small business. You know, a governor five point four hundred and fifty miles away with an edict. This is, this is, this is one man's decision to impose this on us. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I just can't go with anything that doesn't put the state and the county on notice on what we need to set in San Clemente. You know, contact, contact tracing just scares the hell out of me, that 1984. Um, the, you know, on January the 14th, the World Health Organization said there was no human, human contact. And that led us to whatever we have today. Uh, it seems like the goalpost continues to move on us. I don't believe for one minute this governor will open up this economy without being pushed by May 15th. I don't believe it. And I, and, and I appreciate what the county has done. And I truly believe the county will, will push and advocate for us. But us right here, the elected officials, the San Clemente, need to be advocates for our small business, for our community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Councilmember Hamm?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make a couple comments. The first one, I want to commend Jean for taking a stand on this issue and recognizing that our small businesses are truly suffering. But I also want to reiterate what Scott Smith said in that the city council, the city of San Clemente, did not vote to close city businesses. And likewise, we don't have the authority to reopen city business. So the idea that it's within our purview and our power to do that, I think, would be gross negligence on our part. That being said, I do support sending a, a letter up the chain to let people know that we're supportive of reopening the businesses in an intelligent and safe way. But before we go about talking about that, I just need to ask staff, if we go against the governor's orders, what kind of risk do we run in terms of our insurance coverage for that?
Councilmember Hamm, Mayor Protem Ferguson, with your concurrence. I'll, I'll just answer briefly. The staff has been in touch with the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and we have asked them for some information about what it might mean to our coverage depending on the actions that we might take. And we did get in some late information that I know that went to Assistant City Manager Stern. So, Mr. Stern, could you respond a little bit further after what you saw that came from JPIA earlier this afternoon? I don't believe I've seen that yet, but I know you got something.
Yes, and from City Manager Dunick, this is Assistant City Manager Eric Sun. And I think the question that Councilmember Hamm brought up was, in the event that the city was to loosen restrictions less restrictive than what the governor has currently put in place with the state of California, would that jeopardize our insurance coverage? The, the bottom line is, is that our insurance agent or our insurance authority, which is the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, reviews every claim on its own individual merits. However, with that being said, if the city took action against an executive order and was to receive any type of claim or lawsuit related to an injury or something that occurred because of that, that would jeopardize coverage with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority in terms of indemnifying and protecting the city in that legal defense, which in turn would mean that the city potentially could have to pay for that defense without the insurance coverage being provided. But again, every claim and every lawsuit needs to be looked at individually in its own merits. But the city in previous legal actions have taken decisions and made decisions, and then that determines the coverage of those types of lawsuits that come forward. So I believe I answered your question, Councilmember Hamm. Please let me know if you need further clarification.
No, you answered it. Thank you very much. And I just got to give a shout out to Lori Dzczek because she would have been commenting that same thing and asking the same question. With that, I'll be seconding Councilmember Ward's motion if she wants to make one.
I, I have, I have one, one last thing, Mayor Protem, to say. Nothing in that letter, nothing in that letter is anything but advocates for our small businesses. It's not suggesting we're going to overrule any, any counties or federal or state edict. It only states we're advocating for our, for our small businesses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just have one comment. This is Mayor Protem Ferguson. And I just wanted to pose this to City Council and just have you help me out here and, oh, is it okay to urge with the, with the letter to urge the governor and the, regarding the reopening of businesses when we, we're not reopening all of our beaches for passage use or even all our parks sooner than we are? Because that's really important. We have total control of that, but, but yet we're asking for all the businesses to reopen, but we won't reopen all of our own amenities in their entirety. Could, could you all maybe give me some feedback on that? That's just taken online. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris.
Please, go ahead, Chris.
Jean, you, you have the floor. This is your letter. Go for it.
Um, we have every intention to open up every, ev- every park, every facility we have. We're merely sitting back, we're, we're merely allowing staff to come up with a systematic plan to do so. We certainly do not want to keep anything closed for one day more than what we have, have to. Ask about if we can move up the skate park, ask if we can move up the, the tennis court. The other things become a little, a little more, um, a little more complicated. What I, you know, what I would be willing to do, um, is maybe if we could go to our sister cities in South Orange County and come up with a universal letter to county, to, to state. See, see if our councils in, in San Juan, see if the council in Dana Point, Laguna Miguel would be willing to join us in a joint letter, which would be, uh, which would have more power. I would, my only reluctance to do this is, again, time is not on the side of our small business owners, and it's breaking my heart. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other-
This is Councilmember Ward. I actually will second, I think that's the motion that Jean made. I will second that, that we should, I think that's a good idea to go to our other cities' direct staff to do that and see if we can get some support letter, definitely that reflects what the councils are all thinking, that we are worried about our small business and asking the county, what is it that has to be in place for us to get to phase two and three, for our, for our businesses to open? Whatever that is, we want it done as fast as possible. And what can we do to help? And what can we do to assist the county and get this done? So I think that's a great idea, so I'm seconding that.
And if I may, before we move on in terms of a vote, um, or a substitute motion by Councilmember Hamm or whomever, I just wanted to note, I did hear that there was a letter of, uh, exactly as what you're stating and requesting was being done, but I hadn't seen it. So I don't know if such a letter is done, but I heard about that. In fact, I reached out to the city manager to let him know there, that, uh, there is something being done, but I wasn't sure what it was and if I could find it or if I could not, if it had to come to council. But we didn't hear any more about it by the time meeting time. So I'm not aware if it, if there is one actually that has been drafted, but I just wanted you all to know that. And I did just learn that late yesterday, I believe, or early yesterday when I wrote to City Manager. But I certainly would support that. But one more question I do have, Councilmember James, he had hit something with that park, that you wanted to see those reopened as soon as possible. But I did make, was curious about what you thought about the beaches, because that was removed tonight. So we're not, we're not allowing people to go and relax on the beach. But yet we want the business to reopen, but people can't go sit on the beach and just read a book and relax and watch the waves. So, and that was removed from tonight's agenda, unfortunately, but, um, I guess that's-
You have an editorial comment for- Yeah, it, I mean, yes, that's right. I don't know what your comment, you're, you're trying to solve. I just want-
Oh, how can you support reopening businesses when we can't re, we're not supporting reopening the use in their entirety of our public amenities? That was my question earlier.
And thank you, Mayor Protem, for your editorial comment.
Okay, so no more further comments? All right, so let's go ahead and, um, hear that motion one more time, please, if we may. Would you like to make the motion? Council, Councilman James?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to... Kathy, help me out here. The motion should-
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, Jean. So this would be your motion, uh, to direct staff to reach out to our sister cities and see what support that we can get and their concerns, all on the record, that we mutually send a letter to the county of how concerned we are about our businesses and the state, if that's what you want to do, to reflect our concern with our businesses and whatever is the requirement to get in place to go to the next phase to open these, we want that done expeditiously. So I think our other cities will have something to say about that, but I think it's a good idea. So this-
I'll second that, I'll, yes, your motion. I'll second that motion, Councilmember Ward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so, Councilmember Hamm, do you have any substitute motion before I do a roll call on the vote?
I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Councilwoman Ward?
Aye.
Thank you. And Councilmember James?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Ferguson? Aye. That motion passes 4 to 0. Okay, so next on the agenda, we've eliminated, uh, the council eliminated three items. So we do have public comments for those items that the city attorney said can be read. And we, at the beginning of the meeting, the majority of the council voted to make those one minute. So, um, Laura, would you like to read some of those, I'm sorry, those comments at this time?
Yep, I'll go ahead and get started. These are comments for item number four. From Kathy Dominicini, "Dear Council, I'm writing you tonight to ask you hold off on opening the pier and changing the parking guidelines that are currently in place. We can acknowledge the desire for people to get out in the fresh air, but as we witnessed last weekend here and in our neighboring communities, many individuals do not practice common sense and do not practice social distancing and were not wearing masks. Prematurely lifting parking guidelines and other restrictions is short-sighted and opens the potential for increasing the spread of the coronavirus. Cities like Newport Beach are considering shutting down their beaches again. Most likely, San Clemente will follow suit. Taking a moment to look at the long-term game, gain is valuable. I believe my fellow San Clemente residents can make this sacrifice for each other." Next comment is from Karen Bellu. "I understand the topic of reopening San Clemente businesses on the agenda for today. Here are my opinions. I think businesses need to reopen as small businesses are struggling. I think they should be reopened cautiously, and social distancing should initially be put into place. Beaches are a challenge. I, as I'm sure most, if not all, San Clemente residents would love to see our beaches open. But if we open ours when San Diego, most of Orange County, and LA are closed, then we will see everyone flock to our beaches as they did last weekend in Corona Del Mar, which could set our city back in the next weeks. There may be, may however be some creative ways to go around this, such as limiting beach access to San Clemente residents, keeping parking lots closed in one area is one idea I saw online, not a bad one. Get lifeguards involved with monitoring beachgoers for social distancing or residence status. Have security-type staff, maybe seasonal lifeguards, check driver's license of people heading towards beach. Provide SC residents with a beach pass where those without a pass could get ticketed or towed." All right, time is up for that one. Next comment is from Sherry Hunter. "In consideration of the proposed opening of the parking lot of Pier and passive use of beaches, you only have to look at what happened in Newport Beach last weekend to get a preview of what to expect here in San Clemente. If you open our public areas or just look at what took place right on the border of San Clemente and Dana Point where the county's poachy beaches, because the county has not closed their beaches, this little patch of sand was packed with people even after the city closed off the parking meters on Comino Capistrano. Cars filled private parking lots and creeped into the surrounding neighborhoods. The throngs of people on the beach migrated down the beach into areas that are also private beaches, and there was very little social distancing. San Clemente has a low count of C-19 outbreaks, but that is greatly due to the fact that non-residents have no incentive to visit our community. With beaches open, this will change dramatically. We fully support our country's constitutional rights and are not looking to take away anyone's fun, but when real lives are at stake, we have to take preventative measures. We want to shop in our town, we want to walk on our pier, we want to dine in our restaurants." All right, next comment from Doreen Lones. "As a 40-year San Clemente resident, I'm writing to support restricting parking during the COVID-19 challenge. Since the virus is very contagious and since there are many individuals, per Dr. Fauci, that have COVID-19 but don't have symptoms, we must enforce social distancing. As citizens don't have, as citizens, we don't have, don't we have a moral obligation to protect our vulnerable populations? Open parking will invite more non-San Clemente residents to our beaches, and as it is, the trail was very crowded. The beach trail is narrow, and last weekend, people were not social distancing, yet science has shown us that the virus is very contagious. This is small temporary inconvenience for us citizens, but a necessary sacrifice to protect others. Unrestricted beach parking is a want to have but not a need to have. This should not be about our individual wants, but about the greater good. Thank you for your consideration." Next comment is from Janet Dupree. "For council agendas, is there any way beach parking lots can be limited to residents who have purchased annual parking permits from the city?" Next comment is from Candace Hall. "I've been a resident of San Clemente for 13 years. Everyone who lives here should have the opportunity to walk the beach after being in our home- Everyone who lives here should have the opportunity to walk the beach after being in our homes for so long, not just the people who live close to the beach or are lucky enough to find a parking spot. We have a handicapped daughter who has an adult stroller that weighs 40 pounds. We need to be able to park by the beach to enjoy a walk-on. If there are many San Clemente residents in the same boat, please open the beach parking lots. Next comment, Sherry Grace. First, thank you for holding this special meeting this evening. I'm writing regarding the beach parking lots and opening of businesses. I have mixed feelings about this, as I am in full support of opening all businesses, parks, and beaches as soon as possible. This week would be great. My only concern is if we do open and neighboring cities, i.e. Newport Beach, decide at their council meeting this evening to close for the next three weekends, we will have a flood of visitors if ours is open. If they vote this down, then I would like to see our beaches and parking back to normal. I drove down Del Mar last weekend and saw trash overflowing in the cans, large groups of people sitting outside of restaurants, probably waiting for their to-go orders. No social distancing there, so in a way, they're already partly open and guidelines are not being enforced. My recommendation would be to open up the beach parking only if you're going to open up the business. Do them both in harmony. I appreciate all the council has done to make the best decisions for our city, given the ever-changing world we are living in. I trust you will make the right decisions for our city to move forward.
Next comment comes from Hope Tarrant. We've lived and invested 22 years in the city and the actions of the leaders of the city are deplorable, from the inept handling of the homeless situation to the handling of the COVID-19 situation. While Lowe's and Walmart are teeming with cars and people, the beaches are closed. The beaches are now open, but the parking lots and access is completely blocked, as if mocking constituents. Would you allow large retailers to remain open but block all parking lots? No, because that would be absurd. Open the parking lots to the city beaches now. Hand out city residents parking passes if needed, but city residents pay taxes to support our beaches. You're voting our rights as city residents. And next comment comes from Josh McLeish. Why are we still closed from Lost Winds to, Lost Winds South to North Gate? State parks and state beaches have closed their facilities all over the state, but access to them is still open, including other Orange County state beaches. This current situation makes no sense. The officers on the beach can't even give an explanation that is uniform or makes sense. Let's get the beaches opened up all the way, let's get the trails open, let's help people get back to some sense of normalcy.
Okay, next comment is from Paul Murphy. You're threatening the community's public health if we reopen city-owned public parks, trail spaces, and beaches to the public. I honestly do not care if small, local, and business, medium-sized businesses financially suffer or shut down if they don't proper, properly practice social distancing mandatory face or mass hygiene and sanitation efforts and limit capacities. Our own health and our own lives matter more than someone catching waves, getting a haircut, going out and sitting down to eat or playing golf. Your privileges and ignorances threaten the elderly, poor people, and people of color in our community. Please keep the city closed until further notice. And, uh, let's see, comment from Bill Hart. Reopening San Clemente and respecting the coronavirus are not mutually exclusive. Let's trust our residents to rise to the occasion. It's time for common sense to prevail. The people of San Clemente are ready to start enjoying personal freedom while exercising personal responsibility. Finally, last comment, I would like to wholeheartedly support and encourage agenda items two, three, four, five, and six. Yes, open the parks, yes, send a letter to the governor, yes, open the lots, open the pier, allow passive uses on the beaches. So, uh, those are comments for item number four. Would you like me to move on to item number five?
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, next, um, item number five, please, from Rich Powers. Please reopen the pier for fishing, beaches, and parking lots. It's, it's time, and the burden you are forcing on our residents, business, and community is extremely damaging and will eventually ruin our city. I, my neighbors, family, and friends urge you to make the right decision for our town. We promise we'll keep proper distancing. And, uh, the last comment for agenda item number five is from Phil Harris. If the pier and beach are opened, how will you control crowds at the Ocean Festival and maintain social distancing? And then finally, comments for, um, item six, if you'd like us to just continue on and read those, we can crank through them pretty quick.
Yes, please, thank you, Laura.
Okay.
This next comment comes from Christina Critch. Dear Councilmembers, first I would like to express many thanks and gratitude to Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson for her practical and balanced approach to the COVID situation as it relates to freedom and rights of all residents. At the last council meeting, she was the only one to take a stand for less government overreach, and I appreciate that. It seems Councilman James may be of a similar mentality now, and I appreciate him calling this emergency meeting in an effort to ease these nonsensical restrictions relating to beach access. Therefore, the rest of my message is directed at Mr. Hamm, Ms. Ward, and Mr. Bain, if he's still around. Mr. Hamm's approach to beach access right away was not only illogical, but is discriminatory. I am shocked the city attorney gave him the green light on this. This can easily be challenged in court. Do you realize, Mr. Hamm, that your mandate is making it nearly impossible for disabled people to enjoy the beach? Are you proud of that? Also, you realize you're making it difficult for residents who live east of the F-5 freeway to enjoy the right to access the beach by removing street parking near the beach? You are not only crowding neighborhood parking for residents, but also arbitrarily closing access points, confining people. And that is all the time we have for that comment. And next comment is from Camille Wyatt. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson and distinguished city council members. I'm writing to urge you to, to vote to open the beaches for passive use. There are a great many of us that do not surf or wish to swim in the frigid cold ocean right now, but we would love to sit on the beach on a towel or chair and read a book or just listen to the calming sounds of the waves crashing or look at the dolphins play in the surf, collect sea glass, or god forbid, get a tan. Many families with children would love to take them to the beach to get out of the house and play. Making sand councils for our little ones is a harmless activity as long as we're six feet apart and the benefits of those aforementioned activities are needed by all, not just a few in town. San Clemente is a beach town and all beach activities would be considered open to all residents as long as social distancing guidelines are followed. We live here for a reason, one of which is to enjoy our beautiful beaches as we see fit as individuals. We all have different ideas of how to enjoy our beaches and those of us that would love to participate in passive use should not be denied an opportunity. And that's all the time we have for that comment. Next comment comes from Caitlin Carney. Councilmembers, I am a San Clemente resident and have dedicated my life to work, my life's work to protecting and preserving the public's access to the coast and ocean. However, during this unprecedented time of a worldwide pandemic, I do not support the city's past opening of the beach nor the proposed further openings for discussion today. The beaches are a precise resource and access is a constitutional right in California. However, in the interest of public safety and welfare, which there's surely never been a greater time to exercise, opening the beaches in our public spaces is not the right decision. COVID-19 cases continue to rise in San Clemente. The proposed openings will only encourage people to leave their homes and thereby violate the executive order to stay at home and will attract visitors to San Clemente encouraging community spread of the virus. I understand that people want to surf and visit their beaches, as do I. However, we must all make sacrifices during this time to support of the common good. Now is not the time to be selfish. Let us not be the next coastal city to be called out in Newsom's press conference. And next comment is from Tom Hammett. First and foremost, I applaud the city council for taking the first steps towards getting our beaches open. Thank you for doing so. I think we have realized that opening one segment of the beach isn't making a ton of sense. While everyone is abiding by social distancing, it is bottlenecking everyone at T Street and the pier. We really need to open the state beaches so that we can spread out and get back to our normal lives. The stay-at-home orders were to flatten the curve and not overwhelm hospitals. Hospitals are empty and sending staff home. Why the beaches remain closed is mind-boggling. People pay large costs to live here, and now with the record levels of unemployment and serious economic turmoil, in the very near future, we need our sanity. There is zero compelling data to support that having beaches and parks closed is increasing the death toll. We need to start living our lives with the virus, not sheltered at home fearful of it. Human beings take risk every day, let the people take their own risks. These blanket laws and guidelines have been a far overreach of power to protect us. If you plan on protecting the city, please open all public access. It is the fair way to go for everyone. We don't need, and that's all we have for that comment.
Next comment is from Linda Williams. Orange County's and specifically San Clemente's numbers are low because of the measures we have taken. Let's not throw all that time and sacrifice away by opening up too soon and especially without the proper precautions in place. The April 27th, 2020 article in the LA Times spells it out quoting San Clemente officials. This global pandeng, pandemic of COVID-19 is still in its early stages. The virus spreads easily, testing capacity is limited and expanding slowly, and vaccine development is just beginning. We expect to be responding to COVID-19 in our communities for a long time. As effective as our efforts have been, if we move too fast to ease restrictions, the potential of exponential, of exponential spread could have grave impacts on health and wellness of our residents, as well as the economy, the Bay Area health officials said. San Francisco Mayor London Breed warned again of not learning the mistakes San Francisco made during the 1918 Spanish flu pandemic and lifting restrictions too soon. All right, next comment is from Courtney Knapp. I hope you decide to open the parking lots and remove the hideous wire fence that was put up in our, with our taxpayers' money. It might be a good idea to allow residents only to use the parking lots for now. You could have someone check driver's license address for entry. Furthermore, I feel that our governor is dogmatic and would push the state into a deep, dark hellhole if we allow him to continue on his path, just like the actions of the governor of Michigan are being watched and intervened. Our governor needs the same. The numbers show the death rate is the same as the flu nationwide. We don't shut down the economy for the flu, so why in the world are we hurting ourselves? I'm afraid this is a huge attempt by some to create a one-world communist government. We must not allow, allow that ever. Please use your God-given wisdom and common sense to open our city and let us get on with living. Thank you, Courtney Knapp. Next comment is from Heather Goulet. Please do not open our beaches or pier for passive use yet. Newport Beach learned the hard way, opening too soon, and will close their beaches this weekend. Guess where all those people will end up? Our beaches. What we have seems to be working for the moment. Next comment, I'm in favor of opening our beaches and access to these beaches immediately, but in a safe way. This would include following the distancing protocols recommended by our health officials. David Mice. Next comment from Pam Baker. I read a lot about how crowded the beaches are. It's not true. The regulations you have in place are keeping the crowds manageable. If you have any doubts, have the lifeguards fly their drone around the pier and T Street. Watch the video and see for yourselves. Next comment, Diane Coffin. Please keep the beaches and access to them closed until it's really safe to open them. Stay safe, keep the distance, and keep the health of our city secure. Next comment is from Beverly Brady. I hope the city council keeps access to San Clemente beaches in line with the rest of Orange County. If Newport closes its beaches, isn't it a likely possibility that beachgoers will move on to the next accessible beach, possibly San Clemente? We are already dealing with out-of-area protesters, now out-of-area beachgoers. We need to minimize the influx of out-of-area people at this time rather than encourage it. It's not okay for me to be cooped up in my house to keep everyone safe, but it's perfectly fine for people from out of the area to enjoy the beach and potentially spread the virus if you're going to allow exercise on the beach for local people only and force it. Next is Kathy Wade. I appreciate the sensible opening of the beaches that you enacted recently and encourage you to stay the course. Allowing only active use beach, of the beaches with parking lots closed to prevent overcrowding makes sense at this time. Thank you for your thoughtful response to this crisis. Next comment is an anonymous comment. As a longstanding coastal San Clemente resident who has raised my three children on our beaches, I would like to reach out to the city council members to address my concerns with loosening the current restrictions at the city beaches, municipal pier, and parking around beach access points. While I believe the value of keeping our beaches open for exercise and recreation is incredibly important, feel opening the beach and pier for passive use is the wrong decision at this time. Passive use not only facilitates an environment where most people will want to spend the day at the beach, it will also create an environment where social distancing measures are nearly impossible to enforce for local officials. In addition to putting the individuals who choose to be passive on the beach at risk, it will also place those who must be on the beach at risk. Maintenance workers, sheriff personnel, and lifeguards, health may all be affected by the large congregations of people on the sand. Moreover, reducing parking restrictions in coastal parking lots and residential areas around beach access points will increase the number of non-San Clemente residents along our coast. While our towns are considering stricter measures to address these issues, such as Newport Beach considering to closing beaches on the weekends and the county's decision to maintain. Okay, done with that comment. Next is from Lindy Siegel. Opening beaches and now parking in businesses will not only put more San Clementeans at risk, but may delay opening of other nearby cities or the state itself. As members of the city council and as human beings, it's your moral obligation to protect each and every San Clemente resident. By bringing in an untold number of people to our beaches, you risk the health of every resident, including business owners, their staff, and customers as COVID-19 cases rise, and they will. You will risk the health and lives of our first responders, sheriff deputies, firefighters, paramedics, nurses, doctors, grocery workers, and pharmacists at a time when they don't even have enough personal protective equipment to keep themselves safe. What data were used to determine the date of opening? I'm sure you're aware that there's a large number of people are asymptomatic yet have the virus. 60% of 600 of the U.S. aircraft carrier Roosevelt asymptomatic people cannot be tested here. Please consider all San Clementeans, including seniors, people with diabetes, heart disease, asthma, immune problems, cancer, lupus, and other conditions in your decision. Few more weeks is not worth the death of any of our dear neighbors. Next is, uh, from, let's see, my name is Bodhi Aguilar, I'm nine years old. I want my mom to be able to come watch me surf at the beach, so please allow the beach, so please allow people to sit on the beach, at least on weekdays. Thank you. My name is Sunshine Aguilar, seven years old. My mom says passive use means to let people sit on the beach, so I want you to, to let you know, I want you to allow us to do that, please. Next is, my name is Stephanie. I would like council to know I'm supportive passage, I support passive use of the beaches. Too problematic with crowds and social distancing on the weekends, maybe only allowing passive use during the week could work as a starting point. And, let's see, we've got two more comments.
First comment comes from Tara. I think that it makes sense to open things, uh, open things stepwise in, in phases as recommended by the WHO. Businesses should have priority for reopening, as that also affects jobs in our local economy. After businesses have reopened in a period of observation, if new infections do not surge, then it would make sense to open the beaches and parks. I agree with the comments that if other beaches and parks are not open in the area, then we will have more difficulty social distancing with the crowds that come on our beach. We have worked hard to ensure public safety through the shelter-at-home limitations of activities. Opening everything at the same time may undo what has been accomplished in flattening the curve. And next comment comes from, dear city of San Clemente, I support opening city beaches and adjacent parking lots and pier. Unless I'm mistaken, the city receives money from our property taxes to maintain and allow public access to San Clemente beaches and parks. I haven't, I haven't yet heard any suggestion by city staff to provide a credit or refund to city residents who have been denied this access.
And that comment was from Pete Curran, and that is all we have for public comments.
Okay, thank you, Laura Necken, for reading those comments. Very good job tonight with those. I guess my, I have one question, um, that came up in listening to several of the comments, and this is for the city attorney. Um, it's regarding constitutional rights, and I just thought about this because, I didn't have time to really open it, but I saw there's a lawsuit that was filed by several plaintiff's businesses against numerous elected officials, counties, governor, et cetera. Again, didn't get time to read it much, but it said Garrigus Law Firm and Dillon Law Firm. Um, and, and city attorney, you don't have to answer tonight if you need to do some research on this, but, um, the comments tonight, in terms of, they are closures, like any of our public facilities that are closure, closed, or even limited in their use, such as the beach, not being able to sit on it, right? Not be able to stand up, or the other, like, just currently. I know we're gonna work on phasing, or, I'm sorry, bringing back of plan to open the parks, but with those closed now, um, I was just flipping through my municipal law book here, and I, it says 1.36, section 1.36 of municipal law, exercise of police powers. Could you help me maybe, maybe understand, is it something that we're actually, um, at risk of being sued over if we keep some of these things closed? Because it says here, you know, we must have reasonable, um, reason related to legitimate legislative purpose to keep, um, these facilities closed or limited? Would you respond to that, or do you need some, some time to get back to it?
Uh, yeah, sure I can, mayor and council. We've been spending a lot of time thinking about that, and I'm happy to, uh, provide a more detailed report, but, but the general rule is that when it comes to, to crises like a pandemic, um, the, the courts are extremely deferential to the legislative determination of what the crisis is and what means are required to, to address it. Our advice is, and, and so that's kind of the bottom line, and it's very, very hard to, um, find an impairment, there's an impairment of the rights to access, uh, the rights to associate and so on, but the courts are very, very deferential to the public agency's determination in, in a, in a pandemic about, uh, what the, what the crisis is and the means to address it. Our recommendation, though, going forward, is, as you said, Mayor Pro Tem, is that it's important, as an emergency ages, to resubstantiate the, the emergency and then to review the fit between the emergency and the strategies that we've come up to address it. So that in a nutshell is, is kind of a summary of how courts will really defer and be extremely unlikely to find violations of civil and constitutional rights in these circumstances, but that doesn't mean, as you suggested, uh, that, uh, we, we don't have the need to resubstantiate and reevaluate the emergency as time passes and to make sure there's a tight fit between emergency and our strategies.
Okay, thank, thank you for providing your legal opinion on that. I appreciate it, Scott. Okay, so are there any other questions, council members?
Yeah, this is Chris Hamm. I want to make a mo- Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, I want to make a motion that we agend- Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we agendize the election of Mayor Pro Tem for next council meeting.
I'll second that. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, Councilmember James seconded that, and I'll take a, a vote on that. Oh, excuse me, if I may. City Attorney, I know this is a special meeting, and we typically do such agendizing of items with seconds at council comment section of the agenda. We do not have that tonight. Does this still qualify?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Discussion about a future agenda item is in order at any time. And with two council members in favor of that, you would not need to take a vote on that. The council policy has it be set automatically according to the wishes of the two.
Okay, even though that's not listed on our agenda tonight?
A motion to add something to a future agenda is always in order, and the Brown Act allows that to apply at any time. You can't debate it, but it can be placed, yes.
Okay, well, I will go ahead and take a vote on giving me the boot as Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Hamm?
I'm sorry, we did- Yeah, I'm going to take, I'm going to take the city, city attorney's advice and not do a roll call since the new policy states only two council members can add something.
This is Scott. Just with the consensus of two, I think, I think it's done, I think it's, it's action complete.
Okay, that is fine then. All right, then that motion passes. And let's see, do we have a motion to make an adjournment tonight?
Not, not quite yet. I have, I want to clarify.
Councilmember Bain, do you have a question?
Yes, yeah, I, I do. So as we look at opening a park and everything and a report coming back to, to us at the next council meeting, the, the question I have, will that include opening the pier, taking down the fence around Park Del Mar? Will that plan include those two things? If not, I'd like to make a motion to have them on the agenda for the, for the next meeting.
So, excuse me, I'm sure- Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, are you looking to agendize?
Opening, opening the pier.
Oh, okay, oh, so the item that you, you all removed tonight off the agenda that I suggested.
Yeah, it was just, I just want, I, I just wanted it moved to next week, that's all. So opening the pier, taking down the fence around Park Del Mar area, and will, will that be included in the city manager's report to us? Or do I need to make a motion to have that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Oh, yes, you can get a second for that to place on the agenda if I'm understanding correctly. Isn't that correct, City Attorney?
Yeah, it could be on either way, either included in the manager's report or I think if you call it out and add it to the agenda, that gives you greater latitude to discuss it at your next meeting. So either way, but you have wider berth if it were added by the council as proposed.
Okay.
So actually, actually, there would, there would be three things that I would want, want added. The pier, taking down the fence, and active use of the beach.
Excuse me, you mean passive use? Passive use?
No, active, that we, uh, excuse, you're right, I'm sorry, excuse me. Passive use.
That's okay, that's okay. No worries. Oh, good, well, I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you so much. I'll second that motion of yours, Councilmember James, since I was very eager to see those happen tonight, and one week is not long. So thank you so much. Good job. All right, so would anyone like to make an adjournment to the next meeting on May 5, 2020?
I'm going to, we adjourn to the next regular council meeting, which is scheduled to take place on May 5, 2020 via teleconference. Close session until we consider it, and this is a change at 4:30 PM. And regular business meeting will commence at 6 PM.
Do we have a second? All right, great. Thank you very much. All right, thank you for tuning in, everyone. We'll see you next time.